I'd like to call the Monday, February 26 meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. First, I would like to announce that this meeting is being recorded live and ask if there's anyone in the audience also recording anything. Seeing none, could we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first item we have is public comment, and we have Wayne Page who signed up to speak.
Good evening, Wayne Page, 900 Common Road. I know I haven't seen you people in quite a while, and that's why I came up tonight, is I had surgery on my back, and it's progressing very well. And I wanted to let the people in this town how thankful I am for all the cards, the baskets, the fruit baskets, and the food they brought up for supper and at times, too. It's just unbelievable how these people care about each other in this town. And I just wanted to personally come up here and thank you, because if I had to do thank you cards, I would be there for weeks. And I just want to say, thank the town of Auburn, because the people really care about each other, and I want to thank them from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
You're welcome. We're glad to see you feeling better. We have no public hearings or presentations. We have no communications. The next item, a Board of Selectmen items, we have a Harley-Davidson license. Is there someone here, please?
Yes.
If you can come up and join us, because we're going to... Could I have a motion to take Agenda Item 5A1 and 5A2 together?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. So we're here tonight. Sheldon's Harley-Davidson has an application for an entertainment license and a one-day beer of wine license. They've given us a calendar of events, have met with DCG, and have asked us to approve the entire calendar. Good evening. If you could give your name and address for the record, please?
Chad Raymond. I live in Grafton, Mass., 52 Tulip Circle, representing Sheldon's.
Okay. And Chad, you are not the one that completed the application. What's your position with Sheldon's?
I'm the general manager.
Great. Okay, thank you. Okay, so can you tell us a little bit about what your plans are for those evenings?
Yeah, ultimately, what we're trying to do is just really, you know, support the, you know, the motorcycle community and have some bike nights there. I know that they have Halligans across the street, which is a kind of a bar and grill that they've held. And ultimately, what we're trying to do is bring that activity to the dealership to support our sales and hopefully get some motorcycle sales out of it. But, you know, ultimately, yeah, it really comes down to bringing our sales up and getting people to the dealership rather than across the street. So we're trying to, you know, do a list of events. That's really what we're looking to do.
Could you give us some specifics on the entertainment? Is it a DJ? Is it the same DJ every week? Where they all be set up, et cetera?
So what we're looking to do is ultimately have a band, basically, you know, it may be the same band that might play three out of the, you know, out of the dates, but we're looking to kind of change that up and have some different bands, if you will.
Okay, so just...
And there very well may be a DJ that is our typical DJ that, you know, comes to Sheldon's, but, oh, yeah, we're looking to do some different bands also.
So just for your information?
Yeah.
The application is for a DJ?
Right.
That's what they've put? They didn't put live bands on, they put a DJ, one DJ?
Okay.
Okay. Do members have questions, comments? Mr. Berthium?
You mentioned Halligans. They have like antique car. It's not like you're trying to compete with them.
We're not competing. We're doing it the day after, and it's only twice a month when they do it once, or actually four times a month.
And do they have something with motorcycles?
They, yeah. So they have a bike night that historically they've been sponsoring Sheldon's.
Okay.
On Thursday evenings. So, you know, when I sat down with, you know, the fire chief and the DC, you know, at the DCG meeting, their concerns were that we were competing ultimately with them and how much traffic there would be going back and forth on the street, on the road there. So we changed it to Fridays, so there wouldn't be any competition. But ultimately, they're doing a bike night as well on Thursdays.
So you're staying open later than regular hours for this bike night?
Until nine.
Okay.
Yep, yep. So during the summer, we're open until seven. That's kind of our seasonal, season hours. We would be open two hours later than the seven o'clock hour.
So you may or may not be aware of the issues of the past, so I'll bring them to your attention and ask you a couple of questions.
Yep.
There have been issues with traffic, with noise, with... They actually had to shut down Route 20 at one time because of a smoke show.
Yeah.
So are you planning during these bike nights, are you planning any, and I don't know the terminology for motorcycles, are you planning any like stunt tricks, bike tricks, like, you know, the revving of the motorcycles, the burnouts, things like that? Or is it strictly, you know, come down Sheldon's, pack your bikes, have a couple drinks, listen to the music? Or will it entail what you've done in the past with the bike shows?
Yeah, it won't. And I'm familiar with like the stunt show, if you will, whatever was done prior. You know, certainly I wasn't there, so I can't speak all that well to it. But, you know, all we're looking to do is have people ride down, they park their bikes, you know, they'll have a beer or two, maybe get a burger off our food truck that we, that we're looking to have there, and then they're on their way. You know, we are doing a three-drink minimum with a wristband, so there's not going to be people there, you know, getting heavily intoxicated and, you know, acting crazy, I guess, if you will.
I don't want...
And I say drink, but it's only going to be beer. There's no hard liquor or anything like that.
Yeah, that's, yeah, there's no license for that. I have other questions, but do members have questions that they want to jump in with?
I do, but I can wait.
Okay. So my initial thought, because we've dealt with this and had issues in the past, you know, when I saw DJ, I didn't necessarily have as many concerns, and that's what the application is for. Certainly, a band brings it to a different level of noise for the neighborhood. Because there have been issues, I, and I know that the town asks for a complete calendar, I wouldn't be willing to support the entire calendar tonight. I'd like to give you, say, the month of April, and then see how that works out, and then if there are no issues, I mean, I can't speak for the rest of the board, but I wouldn't ask you to go to DCG again and come in here again, as long as there were no issues, then approve the calendar. But I'd like to see if we can approve a couple nights and see how that goes, because we did have many, many calls logged with the police last year, and we had police testify of the issues.
Yeah, so, you know, one of the things that we did differently probably from last time is that we have a big space, if you're familiar with the parking lot there. We have five acres of paved, you know, lot. So we move, we're moving the, rather than being up front and being close to the road, we're moving it out back, so to kind of give a sound buffering. That's an additional probably two or 200 feet or so from, and there's really no houses behind the building of Sheldon's. So we're looking to take that out back, take the, you know, crowds out back, if you will. And as far as the DJ and band goes, the DCG, they kind of made it seem like that wouldn't be an issue. So we left it the way it was. However, if it's a DJ thing, that's what makes people feel most comfortable, then we can certainly work with that. You know, I mean, that's something that we can do, you know, rather than having a band.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cappenta?
Yeah, I'm just concerned, the site is large, but not too large. How many vendors are you anticipating you're going to have?
Sure. You know, my guess is if we get four, then I'd be surprised. But we, and that's another thing that we could limit as well, is if there's, if five's the limit, then we'll have five, you know. But I don't really suspect that there's going to be any, you know, 20 vendors there that's taken up a 10 by 10 space, you know, and you get 20 of those spots. There, it's really just kind of the allotted space that we have and that we put on the plan, that's really what we're going to have designed for our vendor area.
The chair, you mentioned the crowd size will be between 150 and 200 people.
Correct.
How are you going to limit the number of people to that amount?
To, as far as limit it?
Yeah.
So that's something that we can do as well in terms of, you know, if 200 people is the max, then we can turn people away from the bike night area, if you will, because it will be fenced in. I walked a lot with the fire chief, and he told me specific area where this thing needs to be, and, which is more than large enough for 200 people, or probably much larger than 200 people, but...
And I, to follow up on Mr. Cappent, I think that that last event, the way it was advertised, even caught you guys off guard, you know, you expected a few hundred people, and there ended up being like 1,200 people there.
Yeah.
So I think that's a concern, how you'll control that. If, you know, if it's a beautiful Friday night and you have a band that everybody loves, you know, what's your, what's your plan to control that number?
Yeah. You know, I think that, you know, we can certainly turn people away. We can do a bus or shuttle in terms of parking in from across the street of Halligan's. You know, we've had them offer to allow us to use that parking if possible. You know, in the past, I mean, I don't know the experience the prior person had, but from what I understand, it wasn't a lot. I mean, I've been in the motorcycle industry for 15 years, 10 of which doing events like this, and so the experience level is there, and I don't know how well that was planned out prior to me coming on board.
Does anyone have anything else? So I can, like I said, I can support this tonight for the month of April. Let's see how two events go and see if there are any issues. If there are any issues, we can iron them out in DCG and then look at the rest of the calendar.
Sure.
But I can only speak for myself.
Is there any, is there a possibility, so we threw the 13th on there, hopeful that, you know, that spring is going to spr- sprang pretty quick. Is there any, is there a possibility at all to look at any dates in May, only because it will be nicer out to see if it, it'll be busier and see how we can, I guess, capitalize and then go from there?
So what are you talking about, like in the...
Like drop, maybe we, maybe I drop the 13th and not even do it, and then potentially do like the...
The 27th, the 11th, and the 25th?
That's, yeah, I guess that was what I'd be proposing, yeah.
The chair, I just want to ask, so you're, if I may just ask for clarification, are you looking to get approval tonight for April and May events? Or, because I think what the chair is suggesting, and it may go to the other members for discussion, but I think she's suggesting to just approve the April events to start, but the May, June, all the other events could then be looked at?
Sure.
At a later date? So I was just trying to follow the questions.
Yeah, no, I guess that's my point. I'm trying to get, if it would be possible to get approval for the...
Yeah, so we could, we could actually potentially, you know, approve April and May conditionally, that if, approve the first four conditionally, that if there are no major issues that have to come back before the board, we can approve it conditionally. Mr. Berthium?
I guess I'm looking at, we're saying that we can approve, you know, three or four, you know, conditionally. I don't understand why we wouldn't approve the whole calendar and just say that we are going to review this as a board after, say, the April 13th. If there's no issues, you know, and nobody's coming back to us on the 13th, then we have no, you know, can't we put something in where we can rescind it if there's an issue? Rather than making them keep coming back where they've done their entire calendar, why not just approve the calendar with the condition that if there's any issues or any major issues, we have the right to rescind the rest of the calendar at that point?
Excuse me one second. Just let Mr. Berthium finish his question.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. No, his point, I was going to say something.
And you're welcome to make any motion you want. I mean, we could do it that way as well. You can address that point.
To his point, you know, the big thing in the marketing world is having a plan, right? And that's why we did it this way. In my past, you know, I worked for the largest Harley dealer group in the entire country, and this is how we always did it, was to have effective marketing and, you know, have this planned out properly. We did have the list of events, and it did allow us to, you know, get the word out there, if you will, and advertise appropriately, and it does help having the list done. And that being said, we may, to that point, we may say, well, shoot, the first three or four might be successful, but, you know, maybe we'll cut out June, and we may pay for it, and not even, we, possibility, we may not even do it. And I spoke to the fire chief about that, and he said that, you know, those guys said that it probably won't be an issue, but that's, that might be a possibility where we may not even do the bike night.
And you're only looking to have these events? You don't have any of those other events that you had scheduled?
So the only other thing that we would do would be like a Saturday afternoon from like 11 to 3, a food truck, really no music to be, to be sort of, just a food truck. We might do a giveaway of a gift card, you know, but that's really, no entertainment venue.
So just to be clear, none of these events are in any way similar to the large, and I don't even know what you called it?
It was a stunt show, a bike show.
A stunt show, thank you.
Yeah, no, absolutely not.
Okay.
No, no. I didn't, the fire chief and I spoke about, they goes, well, you know, is, if you wanted to do something like that, this would be a completely different approval process, and I completely get that.
Okay.
Yeah, there is certainly not a, anything like that going on, you know. There's no burn, you know, because some places and some dealers will have burnout contests
Yeah.
and stuff like that. I'm not looking to do that. I mean, ultimately, what we're trying to do is make it a safe place for people to come, you know, come to Sheldon's, because they've never done anything like this before at the store. And to me, I think that it would be a good thing for the facility and the community, you know.
Did you have something, Mr. Liberty?
Oh, I was going to make a motion. If mine has a question.
Do you have another follow-up?
Yeah, and I just want, before we, before a motion's made, you know, I just want to add with the fact that, you know, I'm suggesting that we put the whole calendar on and might make it easier for your marketing, that you do keep in mind that, for whatever reason, it seems that every time in the past somebody has come to us and said, yeah, we're just going to do this, yeah, we're just going to do that, it always ends up being more.
Sure.
And then we, we look like fools, you know, and so I just will say that hopefully you'll respect the fact that if we do allow the whole calendar and we're letting it go forward, we're hoping that, you know, you really are going to stick to, you know, the low-key, you know, have your fun. I think that it's a wonderful thing, but, you know, just, just don't, you know, don't do more than what you're saying you're going to do.
Yeah. Well, I mean, Sheldon's, those guys have been around a long time, and we're not, I'm not looking to do this just for this year. This will be something where, you know, I'm hopeful that, you know, goes very well and that we can do something similar for next year's season as well, you know. That's what I'm hopeful for.
Thank you. Mr. Cappenta?
Just before we get to the point of motions, I would ask whoever makes a motion that if there is any off-site parking, that it's clear that a shuttle must be provided from wherever that is with the approval of the police and fire chief, so that we know what's going on. We don't want people crossing the street.
Yeah, that was, that was definitely an issue with the last one, so...
Yeah, no, I spoke with those guys about that, and, you know, we can have that on kind of standby, if you will. I don't know that, you know, I don't know that we would need that up front for the first, for any of them, quite frankly, but we would, I could do have a standby thing where that would be an option.
And the only other thing, I would say that we be specific to what is presented, that we're approving only what is in the applications. And if we have any noise complaints or anything, that actually the manager gives a phone number, provides a phone number to the town, and with the expectation that if any of us call you, that something is done about the noise, because you do have people in the Tinker Hill neighborhood that's right behind you.
Yeah.
And you also have people in front of you. And depending on how loud a band is playing at 6 to 9 o'clock at night, you know, we want the residents to be able to enjoy their property, especially as spring is coming. They may be doing things. I think the last time we had somebody trying to throw a first communion party, they couldn't do that. Small children on the hill couldn't sleep. So I just want you to be very aware that
Yeah.
noise needs to be kept to a reasonable minimum.
Sure.
Not blasting out so that everybody in Oxford can hear you.
Now, the good news is, is the bands can adjust their sound control, so if it's done appropriately, then absolutely.
So before I entertain a motion, these do need to be made separately. So I'm looking at the entertainment license first, and just for the record, we have in our packet, we have a butter notification per the policy. There were several abutters who were notified. Are there any abutters who want to speak? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this? Seeing none, is there anything else you want to add?
The only thing I would ask, I guess if, so if we did add a band, how would that work?
Ms. Jacobson?
We have an application before us for a request, and it appears that the discussion, I don't know what the discussion was, but we only have the notes in our packet from DCG
Sure.
about a DJ.
Yep.
I would advise through the chair, if you wanted to add a live entertainment, that you would probably have to file another or amend this application.
Okay.
To clarify which dates would be actual live entertainment, because it is a different set of criteria for a DJ versus a live.
Okay.
But you can work in our office on filing that type of amended application.
Okay.
So...
But that doesn't fall under the entertainment license or...
It does, but you would have to specify, again, I believe this application was specific that there was going to be a DJ.
To the DJ, yeah.
So in the future, if it specified a DJ or a live band...
Or a live band.
But right now, they can vote on the application they have before them that doesn't say a live band. That's the only reason.
So we're on the entertainment license right now. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve Sheldon's Harley-Davidson, 914 Southbridge Street, Auburn, Mass. license application, on the condition that a shuttle is provided for any off-site parking.
Are you including the recommendations of the DCG?
Including, yes, the recommendations of the DCG.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second, that's a discussion.
Discussion?
I would just ask that, as I said, the manager who has the charge on site provides the town with a phone number.
Yeah, that'll be me.
And is available throughout the, I just asked that you include that in your motion, and that the applicant can form to only what is provided in the application as presented, unless and until amended.
Is there any further discussion? We're on the entertainment license. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Moving on to the liquor license, we've had some discussion on it in your packet. You do have the liquor license policy, and we have, we have a tip certification for one server. Is that correct? You'll have one server? Do you have a backup server who's certified?
We do, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are there any questions regarding the liquor license?
I guess I have one.
Ms. Cappenta?
You say the event is from 6 to 9, and yet we're serving from 6 to 9. So we're going to have people leaving. Should there not be a cutoff a little before the...
So they get, they get three beers, and that's it. When they come into the facility, when they, so it'll be fenced off, when they come in, they'll be wristband. Whoever's certain, you know, person serving marks them, and then that's it. Once they get to their three, and they're done. So there's no, there's no being over served as far as, you know, they're not going to be there drinking for three hours straight, and let's say they got 10 beers in their system, and they're going to hop on their motorcycle and go for a ride. That's not going to be the case.
So you're saying there's a three beer max?
Yeah.
Then how are you going to control that?
Like I said, wristband. So as soon as they, as soon as they come up, before we even give them the beer, we mark their, they mark their wrist.
Is it one beer, one person, or can two people buy a beer? What, how are you going to run that?
So, say it again?
Is it one beer per person? I come up, I order a beer, you mark off my wrist. I don't order three at once, somebody else, my buddies come up in three hours.
One at a time, yeah, yeah.
They can't even buy two at a time?
It's my understanding, Mass. state law, you can't, you can't be served two drinks at once.
Okay.
Yeah, and, yeah, we don't certainly want, even if that was the case, we don't want people leaving with two beers and, or drinks, I mean, we don't know.
Well, that's my concern.
Who they can hand one, two, or what have you.
Normally, don't we have a 30-minute shut-off?
I am not familiar with that.
Neither am I.
Yeah, I don't think that, I mean, maybe when it gets to the point where if it's a 2 o'clock hour where somebody can't serve, but we can look into that as well and only serve till 30, if that's something that's a possibility or something that you guys want me to do, or 15 minutes before or what have you.
But, so I do have a question on the, on the diagram where it says beer. Is that going to be enclosed so that only someone over 21 can get in to get the beer?
Uh...
Or either roped off or something? That's generally what we require?
It is, yep. So with the way we, the police chief and I walk the lot, it'll be kind of like a big square in the back part of the dealership. It would be fenced off, and they can't come out of that area with the beverage.
Okay, good. Is there anything else?
And we'll have, in the past, I've had written signs all over the place that say, beer, no, at this, you know, can't go past this point, and there'll be people there, employees of mine saying, yay, or, you know, where are you going with that and what's in it?
And I'll just, because you weren't there, just for the record, the time that we did go down there, that it was just a mess. It was, it was bad. It took probably 35 minutes, maybe 30 minutes, to find a person who wanted to be responsible or who knew who was in charge or whatever.
Yeah.
And no one knew what their role was.
Yeah.
So...
That was the day when, when I started there, that's how it was.
So I just, so I think that's what Mr. Cappent is referring to.
Sure.
That if there's an issue, we need to, like, be able to contact the person in charge immediately instead of figuring out who's in charge and who's responsible for what and who's gotten the door and...
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, you guys can have my number.
You can give it us off television.
Yeah, yeah, of course, yeah, that makes sense.
Do members have any other questions? Mr. Berthium?
I don't have a question. I'll make a motion if...
Okay. On this one, there's no butter notification required, but is there any public comment regarding the liquor license, the beer and wine license? Mr. Berthium?
I'll make a motion to approve the licenses provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to any and all of the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license, render it null and void, and with the conditions recommended by the DCG to be placed on the license.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? Thanks. We're all set.
Good luck.
Luck with your event.
You guys are great. Thank you so much.
Let's do it right.
Okay, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
One way to do it, right?
Actually, Madam Chair, before we leave on this...
Excuse me, before you leave?
Oh, yeah.
...we're calling that we were going to put something in the entertainment license. Maybe we should put it in both, that if there's an issue that we can, I know we have something in the policy that we can call them in a hearing. Do we want some language suggesting that we can rescind it if there's an issue? Because we are approving quite a few days.
You're welcome to make a motion to rescind the approved licenses pending a hearing if there's an issue, Mr. Berthium? If there's an issue, Mr. Berthium?
Through Madam Chair, maybe to the town manager, is that something that we could do anyway, at any time?
You could, through the chair, if there was a violation of a license that you issued, you could call for a hearing and revoke a future license. You do it for an on-premise account, so you could also do it for one day.
Thank you.
Are you satisfied with that?
Yeah. No, I knew that was in the policy. It was just mentioned, so I'd like to make sure that we put everything in the, that we discussed.
Great.
So that we don't have a problem.
Great, thanks.
Okay, thank you guys.
You're all set. Thanks so much. The next item we have is a designation of a special municipal employee request by the school department. We have Cecilia here. If you could come up and join us, please. We have your packet, and if you can just explain to us why we need to do this.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me here. I presented this because we had a bowling club advisor position become open for the Auburn High School this year. The person that had done it last year retired, so we had an opening. We advertised it within the school district for the school employees, people that were already employed by Auburn Public Schools. Nobody came forward. It's a stipend position where you receive an amount, the $631, once for the whole time that you perform the duty of the bowling club advisor. We didn't have anyone come forward from within. It was left vacant, and then we did have a person from the outside come forward to, to make application, and was approved to be employed by Auburn Public Schools as the bowling club advisor. However, he also is a vendor that works with the school district, so we felt that that would be a conflict of interest, because he's also an Auburn Public School employee. So I, you know, I reached out to the town clerk and the town manager's office, and was told that I should consult with the Ethics Commission to avoid any conflict of interest. So I did reach out to the Ethics Commission, and with the approval of the person that was taking the position, I had his approval to speak on his behalf, and spoke with the person from the Ethics Commission, and she recommended that I have him fill out a disclosure of financial interest by, in a municipal contract, as required by Mass General Law's 268A, 20D, which he has filled out, and I've included in your packet. And I was told that if he worked only a certain minimum of hours in a 365-day period, that he could be entitled to become a municipal employee. But what we were looking for was, as opposed to making him specifically the municipal employee, was, she suggested I make it a municipal employee position, as opposed to making it per the person.
Okay.
So that's basically what I'm looking to do, so that this person can continue on as a bowling club advisor, but also be able to, he runs his business, and he does, he makes a profit, and he needs to support his, his livelihood, so, and the stipend is a very small amount, so we were looking to just establish as possible.
Okay. So, so the request tonight is to, to vote to designate the bowling club advisor as a municipal employee, not the, not the person named in the report, yeah?
Yes, that's what I was advised to do, is have the position as opposed to the person.
Okay. And it looks like, you know, everything, we've got plenty of documentation that, that they've asked, and you have a written statement from the State Ethics Commission, so, Mr. Berthium?
So the bowling club, is that high school-aged?
Yes.
Okay, so the, basically, in the past, that's fallen under the athletic department, or no?
No, it's, it's, it's been part of this, it's a stipend that's paid out of the, usually if, if it's a teacher that might do the, might be the advisor, the coach, and a lot of times, it's part of a stipend position, so this is stipend paid. In previous years, we had, there was an employee of the, of the school department, Kathy Toby. She was the previous advisor, and she did a great job, and there's a really strong interest among the students, and so we really didn't want it to go unfilled. I believe that last time I've spoken with the gentleman, there was like about 30, you know, students that were very interested, and we, we also sent staff to support him a little bit here and there, that will go and work with certain, you know, students and stuff, but it's a very active club, and they, you know, so we just wanted to continue it.
I think it's a, a great thing, adding the sport of bowling, or the club of bowling, you know, as activities, the more we can keep kids busy, the, the more we keep kids out of trouble. So I think it's wonderful, and I appreciate Mr. Estrella for wanting to step up and do that, because, you know, it, it does take time, and, and I'm sure the stipend isn't even enough, but I'm definitely here to support that. Thank you.
If there's nothing else, is there a motion to designate the bowling club advisor as a special municipal employee?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Thanks so much for coming in.
Well, thank you.
Have a good night.
Have a great night.
So, moving on, I see that we have some people in the audience, I believe, who are here for the feasibility study. Is there a motion to move up Agenda Item 8A?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? So we are now on the presentation of the feasibility study, authorized by the Board of Selectment on August 21, for the proposed draft bylaw to ban single-use plastic bags in the town of Auburn. Masilla Liberty?
I'll just...
You're gonna do a presentation?
Right, I'll just...
Do you want to just do a little background as to how we got here?
Sure. So, a few months back, I don't know, when...
August 21.
August came before the board, someone had brought this up to me. I noticed that other towns were doing it. I had heard that there was a bill in the State House back in 2016, so I started to look into it and brought it to the board, asked everyone for permission to start looking into it, consulting with town administration and other communities in the area, as well as some businesses and retailers in town. So after doing a lot of that research, I've compiled it, could've gone on for pages more. There was, there were some studies that I was reading that were 40, 50-plus pages, just on very specific topics. So I condensed what I could into the report that you have before you, and then I condensed it even further into a PowerPoint presentation
Great.
That I hope will answer most questions.
Great, thanks.
So, this presentation will actually follow what you've got in your packets, if you have it printed out, that 30-page paper, so. You should be able to follow along. So the very first question is, you know, what is a single-use bag that we're counting here? It could be high-density polyethylene or low-density polyethylene. There were studies that I read talking about the differences that I won't get into, because it's really not relevant for our purposes. They both degrade the same way, have very similar effects on the environment, so I won't go into the differences there. What the plastic bags, what a ban doesn't cover, has been brought up by other communities. When I went to speak in Millbury, that was the first question they asked, you know, what, what would this cover? Product bags aren't covered by it. So product bags would be something within a grocery store that you have, that you would put meats in, or candy in, fish. Produce, actually, is another big one. Those bags wouldn't be covered by a ban. I think there's only one or two communities that I looked at in Massachusetts that actually banned those also. It's, it's not a very popular thing to ban, and in fact, the statewide proposal didn't touch those. So those are specifically excluded. Obviously, paper bags are excluded, though pretty much every town that has implemented a bag ban has put requirements on paper bags to be 40% post-consumer product, so stuff that's already been used and recycled, and that the bags are also 100% recyclable. Because that's, that's the, the big reason that paper would be more beneficial than plastic, is the plastic ones aren't as recyclable, but if you switch over to paper, 100% recyclable would be preferable. Dry cleaning newspaper bags that you put on are also exempt. They wouldn't fall under the ban. Bags purchased in stores, obviously trash bags wouldn't be, fall under this. If a store sells plastic bags, those also wouldn't fall under this. It's really just at checkout, giving them to customers. So that was a question. Bags for animal waste, or people use them to line trash bins, if a store is selling those inside, those are fine as well. That was a question that I actually got from Petco, is could they still sell those, those bags that they have specially for animals? And yes, they can, those wouldn't be touched by it. Compostable, biodegradable, marine-degradable. This was actually something that came up in Shrewsbury with their ban, because their ban required that something had to be compostable, biodegradable, and marine-degradable. Currently, there's nothing like that on the market, so they got complaints from retailers all around that you're making an exemption for something that doesn't exist. So when I saw that, scratched it completely from anything that I think we would go forward with. If we were to go forward with a ban, I would definitely recommend saying compostable, biodegradable, or marine-degradable, which are on the market. If retailers wanted to provide those to customers, they could. There's no reason to confine them to something that doesn't exist. I didn't see the purpose in that. So actually, this is an important question. What is a plastic bag? There are a couple of ways of going about it. One is just outright fee. That's been implemented in some places, mostly in Hawaii that I was looking at. The fee is on all bags that are provided at checkout. The major goal being that people will start to bring their own bags, which they won't have to pay for. The second one is just a ban on plastic bags. That would also encourage people to bring their own bags, but they would also still be depending on retailers to provide them with a bag. The ban plus fee is actually, throughout the state of California right now, that's their statewide ban, includes a fee. There are also some cities in Massachusetts, including Boston, which recently implemented a ban plus a fee. The statewide one, I don't believe does require a fee. I'd have to check that, though. And the whole purpose for that, for a ban plus a fee, is the ban would be on plastic bags, so those wouldn't even be an option. The additional fee would be on any paper bags or marine-degradable bags that the store provides. That's just another incentive for people to bring reusable bags, which are the most environmentally friendly option, and it's the best option for retailers, because they wouldn't have to be providing a bag to customers. So why the bans have become popular, this just goes into the pros list that you'll see in the report, just listing those. In the US, the, the bags are made from fossil fuels, usually fracked gas or oil, so it's estimated that the US uses 12 million barrels of oil a year on plastic bags. The Sierra Club estimates that 2 million plastic bags are used in the state every year. The average household uses 1,500 plastic bags a year. That was a study conducted by New York State. I think that could be pretty easily carried over to Massachusetts. I don't really see a, a big difference there, but just to let you know, that was a New York study. The average plastic bag is used for about 12 minutes. That's including people using them. I know people reuse them all the time for, when they take their dog for a walk, or for a bin in their homes. That includes that time. It's just it's so short, the regular time to use it to carry something, that you're carrying it to your car, or from the car to the house, it's so short, so it's an average of 12 minutes use. They can't be recycled at the curbside pickup. This is something that recycling companies run into an issue with, because they can't be recycled at the curb, but a lot of people think that they can be. Honestly, even I did before I started looking into this. The problem is when the bags do end up going to a recycling plant on the curb, they'll get tangled up in machinery. The bags actually have to be removed by hand once they become tangled, so it's a costly delay. The only way they can be recycled is actually bringing them back to the retailer that provides them. Not all retailers do, but some do. In Auburn, I know Shaw's does. There might be a few others that I'm not aware of. Yeah, so it's only 2% to 13% of plastic bags are actually properly recycled. Again, a lot end up in your curbside recycling bins, which isn't proper recycling, and those won't end up recycled. They'll end up usually in a landfill as they're pulled from the recycling conveyor belts. It's 2% to 13%. It varies widely. I think that the 2% was estimated in 2010 by the EPA, I want to say. The 13% was a study that I read, I think it was in 2013, and most of the numbers that I saw ranged from those. Those were the two extremes, so those are the two that I put in there. Yeah, estimates for how long a plastic bag will last range all over the place. The most is up to 1,000 years. It's pretty common to say that it'll take a couple hundred years for them to degrade. The bags don't actually biodegrade, they're not degradable, they'll photodegrade when they're exposed to UV light. So what happens is the bags will actually just break apart into smaller and smaller pieces, until they become microplastics and eventually nanoplastics. Again, that's when they're exposed to light, so if they're not exposed to light, that won't happen, in a landfill or buried under the soil. So in the marine environment, and that's the biggest concern with plastic bags, you'll see the particles breaking apart into smaller and smaller pieces, and that can then absorb toxins. They can absorb toxins that already exist in the ocean naturally, or toxins that are put there by, by people, a lot of pesticides and things like that, that find their way into rivers, and then into the oceans, which in small amounts aren't that dangerous, can become concentrated in the plastics, because the plastic absorbs it. So if that plastic is then consumed by an animal, that's when the toxins start to affect the animal, and they can work their way up the food chain. That was a big reason why the US Senate banned those little microbeads, plastic beads and soap and things like that, because that's what was happening with them when they got into water sources, they would absorb toxins, and the toxins could move up the food chain. Just an estimate, by 2050, the EPA and several other sources have estimated that there'll be more plastic by weight in the ocean than fish, which is a reason that a lot of countries around the world have actually started to ban plastic bags. The European Union is actually, I think this may, requiring that all member states submit some kind of evidence that they've been working on limiting plastic bags. Several countries have already banned them completely. I know France has, and Ireland has. I think a few others have taken some strict, strict regulations on them, including Germany, but they're not the only ones in the EU. It's actually been pretty popular in African countries as well, where agriculture is very big, because the bags, the bags are detrimental to agriculture. The bags, when they do get into the ocean, if they're not broken into smaller and smaller pieces, pose a significant threat to endangered sea turtles specifically, which is a big reason why there's been a push in Massachusetts, particularly along the coast, to ban the plastic bags. The sea turtles usually confuse them for jellyfish, and will try to eat them. The bags can become wrapped around them, and either suffocate the animal or choke them. If the animal does end up eating the plastic bags, they can consume whatever toxins are in it. As the bags degrade in the stomach, too, they release gases, causing the sea turtle to float, and things like that can make the sea turtles easy for prey, easy prey. So that's another big reason that they've been trying to stop it. Several of the endangered sea turtles that actually are at risk from plastic bags come to the Cape, too, which is, which is a big reason for it. Already covered nanoplastics. Plastic that gets into the ocean is carried all over the place. You're seeing plastic that was from maybe the coast of Massachusetts, ending up in the Arctic. But a lot of the plastic does get trapped in the gyres that are formed. The North Pacific Gyre is the biggest one. It's called the North Pacific Garbage Patch. It's about the size of Texas. On land, I already mentioned that some African countries are doing it for this reason. Plastic bags can cause, reduce nitrogen fixation in the soil, so it stops plants from actually being able to suck up nutrients from the ground. Also, if the bags don't break apart, which they can't if they're covered underneath the dirt, they, though they're thin, the roots can actually break through it, so you won't see new plants coming up. That's more of a problem in big agricultural areas than it is, would be here. Terrestrial animals are just as at risk as those in the marine environment, as far as trying to consume the bags, suffocation, and so on. Lastly, there and I sort of the community, the cover of the, the report that I brought you shows plastic bags that I've seen from around town, just on my jogging path, that I do. So that's, that's a big reason that community just started to look into it. One other reason is the bags can clog drains One other reason is the bags can clog drainage systems. I did talk to DPW Director Coyle. That's not an issue for Auburn, so that wouldn't be a reason for us to look into it, but, but it has been popular in some communities. I think San Jose in California and DC both started to look into regulations like this because of, for that reason. And the last reason is that the bags are just not necessary. They're used for 12 minutes and then go on for, can last for centuries. So where are plastic bag bans? I already mentioned that several, many countries have done it. It's 75 countries around the world have, at some level, some regulation. The United States would be included in that because states like California and Hawaii have, so the US is, is counted in that. As far as countries that have done a full-out ban, I think the number is closer to 30. State of California and Hawaii have both implemented statewide bans. Hawaii is actually interesting. Theirs was done county by county instead of a full statewide ban like California. In Massachusetts, there are 61 communities that have done it, and that includes Boston, which was the most recent addition. So the economic impacts are a big one that I wanted to cover. There are three areas that they could financially or economically impact. You have consumers in an area that has a plastic bag ban, residents, well, consumers or residents, municipal governments, and then the retailers themselves that are now affected by the bylaw or regulation in some cases. So first, we'll go with consumers. So the bans, like I said before, are meant to encourage consumers to switch over to reusable bags, which of course costs money. The reusable bags would have to be from themselves. If there were to be a fee, that would be an additional cost if they weren't going up and, uh, and bringing their reusable bags, they would have to pay a fee. This, this study is from San Jose, when they implemented the bag ban plus a fee. The average household had to spend an estimated additional $7.68. That was reusable bags and fees that they had to pay, so there's a cost to consumers. Initially, the reusable bags will last for a while, so, uh, that initial cost is, is, would just last for the first year, or however often you'd have to replace the bags, which is several years. Consumers might also face price increases from retailers if they're forced to spend more on bags and they're forced to increase their prices. That wasn't something that was covered in many of the studies that I had done, so I couldn't really put an estimate as to how likely that is. The best I can say is that I, I talked to representatives from Shrewsbury, Amherst, Natick, a variety of towns in Massachusetts that have done it, to ask them if they've seen anything. Not the most scientific way of going about it, but unfortunately, I couldn't find any studies that really went into it in depth, so they had said that they didn't see any dramatic price increases that they noticed. Municipal governments? It wouldn't cost municipal governments anything extra. I talked to the Amherst Health Director in depth about it. They incorporated these kinds of regulations in with their, I think it's biannual regulations. I talked to the Board of Health about it also, Auburn Board of Health. So by just incorporating it in, it wasn't an additional check that they had to go through. Most retailers complied as well. In most cases, municipal governments would actually save money from a ban. I can't say that Auburn would, but the reason being, towns wouldn't have to spend as much money on cleanup efforts. That's more common on coastal cities and towns. Probably on the Cape is a big reason that they've done it. The plastic bags, you know, go on beaches and are a big part of the cleanup. They're one of the most common forms of litter there. And then, of course, from clog, storm drains. Oh, yeah, here we go. So San Jose saw an 89% reduction in plastic bags in their storm drain systems after they did it. Again, I already mentioned that I, I talked to Mr. Coyle, and this wasn't really a big issue for Auburn, so, um, that they haven't been clogging our drains. They would save on, on litter cleanup, that was another thing. San Jose saw 60% reduction in plastic bag litter in their creeks and rivers. That is something in Auburn. I'm not sure how, what the actual amount is that we're spending on it. There is other litter, though, that would have to be cleaned up as well, so even though we would see a significant reduction in the amount of plastic bags, I mean, you can see on the front page as well, there are other types of litter mixed in there. One of the most common forms of litter is actually cigarette butts and plastic cups from fast food places. Since the ban doesn't affect those, you would still see those types of litter. Another way that municipalities have managed to save money from a ban is through a reduction in solid waste. I actually met with a solid waste committee last week. They voted to support a ban in Auburn for this reason. You're looking at 1,700 tons of plastic each week in New York City, which is why they've started to consider a bag ban. They've, I believe, New York put a fee on it. That was their most recent thing, but they're examining, they're looking into an all-out ban now because it, it just hasn't reduced it enough, but they're looking at a cost savings of $12 million from a reduction in solid waste. The reason that, again, that we're looking at big cities like San Jose and New York City is there just wasn't the research in there examining a small municipality doing it. There's just no one really looking at it, so unfortunately, this is really the closest I could come to, is a, a giant city looking into it. Obviously, Auburn wouldn't see savings that great. The big economic impact, I guess, would be on retailers because the switch from plastic bags would demand an increase in paper bags, which do cost retailers more. California, there was a study by the Equinox Center, which put the difference from a plastic bag at an average of 1 cent to a paper bag at an average of 15 cents, and that's pretty extreme, a, a price difference for retailers. Another study that I looked at was the New York State study, which put it closer to 1 cent to 1 and 1/2 cents, or even to 5 cents, oh, excuse me, 1 cent to 1 and 1/2 cents for plastic to 5 cents to 6 cents for paper bags, and then paper bags with handles to 7 cents to 10 cents. So I think the, one of the reasons that California saw such a dramatic price increase with paper bags is the paper bags demand more fresh water to be made. That's one thing that plastic bags have on them, is they demand much less fresh water to be used in the process of actually making the bags, so that's one drawback from paper Right, so the, the increase, the reason that I like this chart, and granted, this is a bag ban plus a fee, is you can see that it's not really just a complete switch over to paper bags. There's a dramatic increase in the number of people that are bringing reusable bags and a pretty big increase in people that are using no bag at all, just walking into the store, getting whatever they wanted and leaving. So retailer wouldn't see a price increase from those areas because retailer isn't paying to have someone use a reusable bag. If they're providing or selling reusable bags, they may even be making money off of that, and they're also not losing money from someone who's choosing no bag at all. But there is, there is an increase in paper bags, and that was, would cause a price increase. At the back of your packets, I talked to some businesses in town, got estimates from what they, they spend on paper versus plastic, so that one's probably the most accurate one, just because that's coming from actual Auburn retailers instead of looking at New York and California. And just in case they didn't want me to say that out loud at the meeting, I just threw it in the packets there. This was a study conducted by the National Center for Policy Analysis. So this suggested that a, there was a decrease in sales in a community, it was LA County, after implementing a plastic bag ban. It was a 3.3% decrease in sales from retailers inside a zone and a 3.4% increase outside of the zone. It was about 80 retailers or roughly 3% of retailers within the county. Unfortunately, there was no attempt in the study or in further studies by the, the agency to really prove a correlation between that, to see what was going on, if it was in fact that reason that there was a decrease, if people were saying that they didn't want to go to a store that wasn't going to give them a bag, so they decided to go somewhere else, or if there was some other reason. This was also a fee, so the reason really could have been someone didn't want to pay a fee, because there was no way to prove correlation, really take that study of that with a grain of salt. I've, again, talked to the Economic Development Director in Amherst, Shrewsbury Board of Selectmen, the Amherst Board of Selectmen, and the Amherst, Amherst Board of Health, Natick Economic Development Director, Framingham Economic Development Director, no, no, excuse me, Director of Health. None of them have, have said, and I've asked them directly, if they've seen any complaints from retailers about a drop in sales. I know they're not retailers, so they probably wouldn't know, but they're, they're dealing with the retailers in their community daily and haven't seen anything. The, uh, there was a business that I talked to in Shrewsbury, and they're operating a business in Shrewsbury and in Auburn, and I asked them directly if they saw a decrease in sales from when they switched. They said that they didn't see a decrease. The only thing that they did see was an increase in costs from switching over, from the bags. So this is a map that shows where the bags are, or bag bans, rather, are within Massachusetts. You can see they're pretty popular along the coast. Green is where they've been proposed and either haven't been approved or awaiting approval, either from the Attorney General, a Board of Selectmen, town meeting. The red is actually where they have been approved, and blue is obviously Auburn. You can see that there are three towns that have done it in Worcester County, the closest being Shrewsbury and Grafton. And that map is also in the packets, page 15. I already said that 61 communities in Massachusetts have. I looked at the bylaws for about 60 of them, the reason being that I couldn't find Stockbridge's that easily. I know I say that now, and then I'm going to go home and find it, but 60 towns, the, that's about 30% of the residents within the Commonwealth. I'm going to have to check that because I'm not sure if that's counting the addition of Boston. Boston was the most recent town to do it, or city to do it. Yeah, next to California and Hawaii, which have statewide bans, Massachusetts has the most municipal plastic bag bans in the country. Some states have actually gone as far as to ban banning plastic bags. I think that was Michigan, which was the first state to do that. Some other countries out west have done that, when, where they don't want municipalities having variations in, in rules, and that's been a big push as to why Massachusetts should do it on a, a larger scale, so there's less variation between towns. Worcester County, Athol, Grafton, and Shrewsbury, I've already said. In 2016, the Massachusetts Legislature considered banning plastic bags statewide. This, that would only apply to stores that were over 3,000 square feet, so that's another thing that some towns have done, is they've put some kind of limit or size exemption or extension on it. So retailers over a certain size, it would only apply to them, and retailers under a certain size would be exempt. Earlier this month, actually, I think it was February 6th or 9th, the Committee on Environmental Natural Resources and Agriculture did approve a plastic bag ban. Again, like I said, the one that was approved was suggested in 2016 at the State House. It passed the Massachusetts Senate but failed in the House. This one passed Senate Committee again, so we're following it now to see how it goes, but this one does not include any kind of exemption for retailers under a certain size. So if it passes, it would go into effect in August of 2019. It would affect all retailers throughout the Commonwealth, including those in Auburn. So I know that there was some concern about the elderly for Auburn. Because, you know, you're, you're taking the plastic bags, it's a, it's a convenience thing for customers, so, you know, getting rid of those, switching over to paper bags that might not have a handle, or might not be as sturdy, and Auburn does have a large senior base. So I did look at all of the communities that have plastic bag bans. The highest median age was Dennis at 65. You're looking at a low of Williams Town at 21, and then right after them would have been Amherst at 21.6. You're going to see the college towns are clearly dragging that, that number down. Obviously, Amherst is so low because it has Amherst College, UMass Amherst, and then Hampshire College, and Cambridge, I think, is also, yeah, Cambridge is dragging those numbers down, too. So the plastic bag average for all 61 communities in Massachusetts with a plastic bag ban, their average median age is 44.35 years old. Auburn's is 43.7, so we're actually just below that. Very close, though. The state median is 39.2, so you're actually finding that the communities that are implementing these plastic bag bans are on average older than the age of state, median age of state. This graph, I think, shows it pretty well, because, like I said, you've got the averages being dragged every which way from the college towns and communities, so even if you write off this back half, which is all the, the colleges, college towns, you see Williams Town, Amherst Bridge, Water, Cambridge, Auburn is in gray, you can see that we're still kind of towards the middle or even towards the end of, as far as age goes. And the best option for seniors would be to switch to reusable bags, make the one-time purchase. The reusable bags are stronger than either the plastic or the paper bags, and they, they can put however much they want into them so that they're not too heavy. Another concern was as far as income goes, is it wealthier communities that are doing it? You're seeing the high of Weston, 200,000, low of Lee at 38. The state median, 75,000, then Auburn at 74,000, so just below the state median. The average for plastic bag ban communities in Massachusetts is 86,000, so it is above, over $10,000 above what Auburn's would be. So there, there is a higher household income for plastic bag communities than Auburn. Again, I put it in this chart because I, I think this shows it fairly well. Auburn is still towards the center, and we are within one standard deviation of the mean as far as that goes, so we're very close to, to median household incomes of communities that have banned plastic bags. The area where you see a big difference is in property value. So Auburn is towards the tail end here for property value. You can see Duckberry, Chilmer, Akuna, over $1 million, kind of dragging the average out, which, again, is why I think this chart shows it. Auburn is two standard deviations away from the mean here, so we are at the tail end. We would be one of the lower towns, uh, lower property value towns that would implement a plastic bag ban if we were to go forward with it. So this goes into retailers specifically, since they'd be the, the hardest, you know, affected by it. So Auburn actually has a substantial number of jobs in the community coming from retail. This is directly from our economic development report. You can see that 24% of jobs in Auburn are coming from retail. This might be mentioned, yeah, I think it is, on page 16 in the, in the papers, but it's not, I go into a little bit more detail here. Shrewsbury, I thought I'd compare us two since we're fairly close, they were an easy number to find. They're at 18.85, or 19% of their jobs come from retail, so they're below us. Of Auburn's 14 largest employers, four of them are from retail, so you can see it's a substantial base in Auburn. This shows a variety of some of the towns that I could find. If I could find them all, I would have thrown them all in, and I would have made a graph similar to the ones that you've seen. Unfortunately, I couldn't find them all, especially not from the same years. It was hard, I had to comb through economic development reports and master plans to find these ones. If they don't have a year next to them, they're later than 2010. If they do have a year next to them, it's, because I thought it was important to mention, Sudbury was from 1999, which was the earliest one that I could find, so I don't know how much you want to put into that number. And then Lee was from back in 2000, so obviously, those three towns plus Hamilton are pre-2008, so I don't know how much you want to trust those numbers, but you can see that most of the numbers are below Auburn's as far as how, the percentage of jobs in retail, in the retail sector. The one exception, if you're not counting Sudbury, would be Reading, which as of 2013 had 27% of their jobs. This is including wholesale and just regular retail trade, by the way. Reading has no wholesale trade, so it's both at 27%, and they're the only community that is, has a larger retail base than Auburn as far as jobs go. Oh, this chart over here also just shows, that's in the back in the appendix of the report, it's just a quick look at Auburn versus Shrewsbury, but this is self-employed. I just thought it was interesting, it would be something to throw in. Since it's self-employed, I already showed that Auburn has, has more jobs in retail percentage-wise than Shrewsbury. These are just quotes from- These are just quotes from some of the people that I've talked to from other towns. Obviously, you know, we're looking at the percentage of jobs in communities that have, that are in retail, but that doesn't mean that those communities don't have large retail sectors. Natick certainly does, Framingham certainly does. When I reached out to them, they hadn't seen any big impacts in the retail. It's important to note that Natick did work closely with a lot of their retailers in doing it, notifying them as they went. What I tried to do, going around to retailers, letting them know and asking for feedback, they did have some pushback from a few retailers in the community. Buddy noted that, this is Health Director Jim White, by the way, he was the main person that I talked to with Natick. He did note that a lot of those retailers that were initially hesitant or even outright fought the ban, once it happened, started advertising how green they were to drive on business, and had jumped on board now and were working with them. Amherst, Amherst has a lot of regulations on retailers, so, you know, the complaints weren't really coming in from a plastic bag ban, that was fine. They did get pushback from restaurants because they banned Styrofoam. So really, retailers were looking at the other kinds of regulations in Amherst, no one was really complaining about a plastic bag ban from them. Oh, one more thing. I just wanted to talk about Shrewsbury. When Shrewsbury went with their bag ban, the Board of Selectmen did not vote to support it. In fact, they voted unanimously not to support it. It was done via citizen petition, which seems to be how a lot of communities have done it. What I saw from talking to Amherst and Shrewsbury, that both did it that way, is that they ran into a lot of problems because the town administration, Boards of Selectmen, or Aldermen, were learning at the same time as the retailers were, what exactly the law does and doesn't allow. So there really wasn't an effort to try to reach out to retailers because they were trying to figure out what the law meant themselves. So the biggest piece of advice I got from Amherst and Shrewsbury was, if Auburn did go through with it, to understand the regulations beforehand and then go forward with talking to retailers about it, and be prepared to hold their hand through the process. And that's why I've been meeting with the Board of Health and Health Director about it as well. But another thing on Shrewsbury is, once they did pass it by citizen petition and had grown used to it, they did have a pushback by some citizens in the community to repeal the bylaw. That came around the next year. That, ironically enough, that bylaw that would repeal the plastic bag ban was also not supported by the Board of Selectmen, it was unanimously opposed by the Board of Selectmen. And from my talk with the chairman, the retailers in the community also didn't get up and support the repeal. There wasn't really a pushback from them to repeal the bylaw. So as far as enforcement goes, like I said, I looked at 60 of 61 communities in Mass because I couldn't find Stock Bridges very easily. The majority, the strong majority of towns use a Board of Health, Board of Health Designee or Health Director as the enforcing agent. And there's a lot of leeway given to the enforcing agent as to how to go about enforcing the ban, what they want to do, regulations that they're going to put in place, policies to fully enforce the ban. Some, 10%, were town administration, either a town manager had to enforce it, or town administrator, something like that, along those lines. Board of Health or police was another thing that some communities had done, 17%, so that's true. If you're counting Board of Health and Board of Health plus police, you're looking at a solid majority of towns that are using the Board of Health. The other category, I did have questions from the Solid Waste of what the other category really included. Some communities had DPW doing it, some, weirdly enough, had the Board of Selectmen doing it, some had Board of Selectmen, Board of Health, and DPW, just a variety of different committees, solid waste looking into it. So the other category can be any number of those and in any combination. So first offense, what most communities in Massachusetts have done, 62% of them, for the first offense, they just give a written warning to a business, written specifically in the bylaw, that you can't give anything other than a written warning to a retailer for violating the bylaw. And that's pretty much for the reason that if a retailer violates the bylaw once, it's probably not intentional. They might have just not been informed or gotten confused about the starting date or had spare plastic bags that they were trying to get rid of. The next most common was starting off with a $50 fine. 18% of communities did that. You know, you can also have a $20, a $25 fine, $100 fine. Only 2% of communities have an over $100 fine. I want to say that that one community was Amherst. Amherst had very strict regulations on it, so they were the outlier. Some of them also left it up to, the unspecified there, that 8% is left up to a Board of Health or Designee, whoever the enforcing agent is, they can decide. Second offense, for the second offense, I want to note that 12 towns in Massachusetts do give a grace period between a first offense and a potential second offense. So that grace period can go anywhere from seven days to 30 days. So if you, a retailer violates the plastic bag ban, they'll have seven days to get rid of their plastic bags, correct the problem before they actually have to get fined for it, or can get fined by a retailer. Not by the retailer, by the enforcing agent, excuse me. Or that can be as much as 30 days, so a full month from a written warning to when you're actually, could potentially be fined. The only 12 communities in Mass have done that. Most go right from a written warning to the very next day you can be fined. The most common fine for a second offense is $50, same with the first offense. Some do $100 fine. Even more unspecified for a second offense, leave it up to the enforcing agent. And then there's, are a few that go as far as saying it's up to $200, again, that's Amherst. Third offense is usually third and all subsequent offenses. So if you have a $100 fine for the third offense, any offense after that one would also be a $100 fine. So deferments are pretty popular. 21 communities have done them. What a deferment does is it grants a retailer the ability to have an extra six months, usually, it's usually a six-month period, to either get rid of the plastic bags that they have or, you know, continue to use plastic bags if switching over would be too costly for them at that time. The deferments range from six months to two years. They're pretty much all approved by the Board of Health, but some just say, or some agent. So 11 towns in Massachusetts of the 21 do it for six months, six towns do it for a year, three towns do it for two years, and one town leaves it up, totally up to the enforcing agent, I forget which town that one was. But that meant, that essentially means that the enforcing agent, whoever it may be, can continually, excuse me, continuously give deferments to a retailer that requests them if they see that they need them. And a deferment could be given to a retailer if there's an economic hardship, an undue economic hardship, or if there's, they have plastic bags that they need to get rid of. What constitutes an undue economic hardship falls onto the interpretation of the enforcing agent, which is typically the Board of Health. So exemptions and extensions, eight municipalities in Massachusetts get grant extensions or exemptions. That's, again, going back to the square footage. Again, if the statewide legislation passes, you won't see this. So some communities like Grafton, which have granted businesses under a 3,000-square-foot limit, the ability to continue to use plastic bags won't if the state law passes. Some municipalities did 2,000 square feet, 3,000, or 10,000 were the most common. I think the one in Oxford right now that's being proposed, it might not be proposed this year, since Auburn likely won't get it on the ballot, I know they wanted to do it with us, calls for businesses under 3,000 square feet to have an additional three months to wear down the stock of plastic bags. And that's for a couple of reasons. A smaller business may not be able to absorb the cost as easily as some of the larger retailers from switching over to paper. And what this bylaw is really meant to do is to switch people over to reusable bags, which, in the end, are better for retailers if someone's bringing their own reusable bag. That retailer isn't spending money on providing them with a bag. So as someone, as people start to become accustomed to bringing a reusable bag, retailers that do it later on won't see as much of an increase in cost from switching over to paper. So that's kind of the reasoning behind that. Yeah, they can range from three months to six-month delay, or just not having to do it at all if you're under the square feet limit. So enforcement, as I said before, I have been meeting with the Board of Health to talk about it. Some of the concerns that they have are the actual enforcement procedure, which would be going around telling retailers, you know, handling it. So which is why we've talked to the Board of Health or Director of Health in Amherst and Natick to talk about their process. We're also talking to someone in Brookline who is working with them, he's the Director of Health there, I believe, and he's offered to come in to the Board of Health to really explain in-depth the process. Unfortunately, he couldn't make the last meeting that I had with them, but really to go in-depth about how you can tell the difference between the various bags and how easy it is. From my understanding, just from emailing him, it's pretty quick and simple to look at the bags and then tell whether or not they conform, and then to just check it off. So it shouldn't be that extensive. Another concern was the educational component, reaching out to retailers. I did let them know that, of course, I'd be willing to go around and work on this. I did reach out to the Chamber of Commerce and let them know that this was something that I was working on. I also tried to reach out to a number of retailers in the community ahead of it, ahead of this, to see what their thoughts were. So, yeah, but that's something that they would work on. And when I talked to the Solid Waste Committee, they also said that they would be willing to go around and try to help with the educational component. Amherst actually had a decent section on it. I mentioned before that Amherst was learning as the retailers were, so they were a little bit slow to it. But I actually really enjoyed their page online. They have a frequently asked questions page with the number that you can call if you have additional questions. But it really goes through, you know, what's allowed, what isn't. It's very simple and easy to understand. So if they had that right from the start, I think they would have had a much easier time with it. So that's the educational component that the Board of Health had some concerns with. The last concern was the section in the bylaw that I actually had drafted, which says that all penalties should be paid to the town clerks within no later than 30 days. And then specifically, if a retail establishment fails to pay the fines, they may be subject to closure by the Board of Health until such time that all fines have been paid. The reason for that is obviously they're subject to closure. This was really just the teeth of the enforcement, just to make sure that retailers were paying the fines, because they are fairly small. Auburn's, the one that I had written, says no fee for the first offense, it's a warning that 15 days later, $25 fee. So that's the reason for that component. I don't think Grafton had, yeah, it was Grafton that doesn't have that. It's pretty common in most bylaws. I don't foresee any retailer coming into this problem. I haven't talked to any people in any towns that have had this problem, where retailers either refuse to comply or refuse to pay the fine. So I don't foresee that as being a real issue, but those were the concerns of the Board of Health. Solid Waste, again, had endorsed it and agreed to help with the educational component. And that's it as far as the presentation goes. I don't know if there are any specific questions.
Why don't you come back and join us, and we will discuss it now as a board. So first of all, thank you for the presentation, your passion for this issue shines through on it. You know, when we first began this process back in August, it was to give you permission to go out and do a feasibility study, which you've certainly gone above and beyond. We have, you know, much more information than I expected. So I know that you asked that there be a potential vote for the Board of Selectmen to sponsor a warrant article for the May 1st Annual Town Meeting Warrant. I don't want any of my comments tonight to be construed as either support or non-support for this bill. What my concern is, is the process. When we've had, whether it be a dog park, 61A land, or other similar things, we've certainly held public meetings, had plenty of public comment, we've invited department heads in for their input. And my concern is that we're just rushing the issue. And so to state support for this before we've had the opportunity to have public input and have information from the department heads, just doesn't seem right that we, we've made up our mind, but we're going to hear from you anyway. So I'm not going to take a position on this, other board members may support this. We wouldn't, I wouldn't have asked you to go forward to do a feasibility study if I didn't think it was potentially possible in the town of Auburn. I just want to hear from residents, from businesses, and see the process. So I'm not ready to jump into this, and I've, you know, I shared a little bit of this, we need to be, you know, make sure our comments are public and on the record, but I just think that we're very early on in the process. So do you want to add anything to that or hear other comments?
Sure, I can. So one of the reasons that I really wanted to put this on for the potential to be on the spring town warrant, is that I've been in talks with people in Oxford, in Millbury, and in Sutton that wanted to try to do it via citizen petition. Someone in Millbury reached out to me after they saw the meetings from the Millbury Board of Selectmen, where I talked to them. So the idea between those groups and myself was that it would be better going forward if all the towns did it together. I've since reached out to them to tell them that the Board in Auburn may not have enough time to make a decision, and they understand that. So whether or not they want to go forward without Auburn is completely up to them, but I wanted to give the option to join some of those communities. If, I will recommend to them that they hold off if Auburn holds off, so that it will, if the towns go forward with it, we're going forward with it together, I think that's the best option. Mr. Carpenter had suggested that when I first brought this issue up, and then he did come with me to talk to the Millbury Board of Selectmen, and I agree with him that that's the best way to go about doing it. So that's why I wanted the option to vote on it tonight, but I completely understand the concerns that the residents and retailers may not have enough time to provide us back with input, so.
And I just want to clarify, I don't want to take a position on this until we've had input, you know, whether it's, it defeats the purpose of having a public hearing. You know, it's like taking a position on the 61A land or the dog park, it defeats the purpose of having thoughtful input from residents and businesses. Does anyone have anything? Mr. Carpenter?
I have several questions. I don't know if you want me to ask them all at once, or if you want me to. I don't know if Mr. Bertham has questions, or...
So is it best to ask one question at a time, and have you answer that question?
Sure.
Okay.
So you answered a couple of my questions in your presentation, so that was good. I did read this, and I echo the chair's comments that this was certainly, I won't say interesting reading, but certainly very good reading and very good research. My concern is, when we authorize this, we did not say that we were going to sponsor an article, it was only to do an exploratory, so I am not in favor of going, especially with pending legislation in the legislature. I don't want us to be doing something that now confuses the issue. So for right now, I would think that we need to continue to gather information and move on from there. The legislature may vote before they're out of formal session, so this may be a moot point in a bigger problem than we anticipate, so. Have any communities tried to increase recycling efforts on their own or through more businesses provided onsite recycling?
That was a question that I also got from the Solid Waste Committee. No, it was Board of Health that asked that. From what I found, there wasn't any actually town-sponsored initiatives. There were a couple drives from, I think, the Eagle Scout Project to do it in one town. That was in central Mass, too, I'm not sure which town. They don't have a plastic bag ban. They don't have a plastic bag ban. But as far as I could see with the bylaws going, there wasn't an initial push requiring any towns to, or any retailers, rather, to recycle or accept bags back. So there wasn't a step-by-step process, I guess, is your question that I saw.
Okay. Are there any figures which is more cost efficient? Do you have any figures? Is there anything you've come across that says recycling versus replacing all of these bags is more cost effective?
Cost effective is to retailers or to...
What's more expensive, recycling it or buying a different kind of bag?
The question is a little bit tough, because when you recycle a single-use plastic bag, a lot of the times it isn't remade into another plastic bag, simply for the fact that it's not cost effective to do. So when you recycle a plastic bag and it is recycled properly with that 2% to 13%, it usually is turned into another plastic product. I think plastic siding, interestingly enough, is one of the most common forms of what they're remade into. So that being said, you're not really seeing the plastic bags turned into, back into a bag. The paper bags do cost more. One of the reasons that the paper bags cost more is that they're larger, so they take up more space.
I can ask interrupt. I don't mean the plastic bags. I mean recycling versus switching over the bags. That's the boundaries of my question. So I think you've answered that. I did ask, is there any info about implementation cost to community? I know you looked at enforcement, but education materials cost time, they cost money. So there is a cost to the community to take the time to develop this. There's multiple disciplines involved before we can even, you know, push something like that out. You know, one-on-one visits, you know, the communities that have adopted these are wealthier communities, they have larger staffs. We have a very small staff. And I think we need to look at the profiles of the communities, not just what kind of retail they have. I mean, you know, Grafton doesn't really have a lot of retail at all, a lot of business at all. They're kind of mostly residential. And Shrewsbury also does have their little corridors, but for the most part, it's a majority residential town. That's how they support themselves. And they're also twice the size as we are. So they, by their necessity, probably have far more staff than we do. So that is a concern for me, that we're asking the Board of Health and the departments to come up with something else. And I don't know that they can do that in six months with everything else that they've got. So that was one suggestion. Maybe we postpone it, even if we do it in the fall. You know, give them a year, provided the legislature doesn't act on their bill before them. Maybe we give Board of Health a year, and Solid Waste a year to try and develop something so that they can work it into their... What outreach was done prior to proposing a ban in these communities?
A lot of the communities had done it via citizen petition. So none was pretty common. Shrewsbury was one of those, and I think Grafton also was citizen petition. I'm not sure about Athol. Amherst also citizen petition. The one community that I talked to that wasn't citizen petition was Natick, and they had outreach that was similar to mine. I think it was a little bit more in-depth, honestly. They had sit-down meetings with retailers and their Chamber of Commerce to talk about how this was going to be implemented, if they went forward with it.
Last is a three-point. Data on fines collected by communities. Rate of uncollectibles, time and effort to collect, because that is an expense, and the cost of even going out and doing that. Because again, it's not just verifying that it's, they switched over. There are other things that might come into play. And if we're going to send them out to issue fines, there needs to be some reasonableness to expect that we're gonna get some money back, so that we're not just sending people out to do something, an extra thing, which, you know. So those are my last questions.
Mr. Bertham, did you have anything?
I'm very much in favor of what I'm seeing. I agree with fellow board members that, you know, we need to hear more from the community to see what their opinions are. A couple of things from the presentation is, you mentioned that not included in the ban would be like produce bags, bags to put fish and meat and that type of thing. Are those also bags that can't get into, go into the recycle bin, because they would also screw up the recycling machines?
Yep. Yes. So those bags also can't be recycled at the curb. Unfortunately, the reasoning for keeping those bags and not banning them as well is, it's more of a health issue. You don't want fish touching your other foods, or raw fish or raw meat touching foods, and keeping produce contained, is really the reasoning that a lot of communities haven't banned those. Like I said, I think there was one community that did. I want to say it was Hamilton, but that could be off, that did go as far as to ban those bags also.
I remember when I was a kid, and you went to the meat market, they wrapped it in paper, and put a piece of tape to hold the paper down. So it certainly could be done. When we first started with the plastic bags, wasn't there a big push for the plastic bags because we felt like environmentally we were killing too many trees with paper bags? And was there any study toward that? Like, are we kind of going back to where we were by getting rid of the plastic and going more with paper?
So there were a couple of studies that I read through, that if you think this was boring, you should see those ones, that looked at specifically the environmental impacts of paper versus plastic. The really only areas where paper beats plastic as being less environmentally friendly, I guess loses to plastic, are arguably CO2 output, which would account for cutting down trees to use paper, and increased cost of shipping, because you can fit less paper bags in the same box that you can fit plastic bags, just because they're larger. So there's more CO2 output arguably from the paper bags. The way that they've curbed that is the 40% post-consumer product requiring, and that's really why, that any paper bag used as a substitute is supposed to be 40% from recycled, and it has to be 100% recyclable. As far as the plastic bags, they were worse for the environment in nearly every other area. Oh, and water, freshwater usage. Paper bags use significantly more freshwater than plastic bags. In every other aspect, the plastic bags were worse. They did use more fossil fuels, which is why it's arguable about which one really produces, has more CO2 output. There's a back and forth there. But the plastic bags require specifically polymers to actually be made. What's their environment, they're significantly worse. Paper bags, I think the longest one that they found were the wax-coated paper bags that lasted in the environment for a couple of years, but it's nowhere near as long as the plastic bags do.
I don't have any other questions, but I'll just make a comment that, you know, I think you did a tremendous job here with the presentation, and I think if nothing else, you know, hopefully we will get more feedback in the very near future. But we've certainly gotten an education, and hopefully we'll pass that whoever's watching tonight, and who, you know, if we get something like this on our website, to educate people to stop putting the plastic bags in the recycle bins, to stop throwing trash on the side of the road, that you certainly showed some incredible financial impacts of environmental financials. So hopefully, if, at the very least, you've done a great job to educate us, and I thank you for that.
So I am gonna open it up to public comment, but it certainly sounds from the Board of Selectmen's comments that we'll be looking to take this to the next step, which would be a public hearing, where we would take official comments on the record. We'd take comments from department heads, the business community, residents. But I, you know, I will open it up tonight for comments, but please keep that in mind, that there will be a future meeting regarding this. Is there anyone who wants to speak? Just give your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Alan Rafferty, 18 Paul Street, Auburn. First, I'd like to say that was quite the feasibility study. You worked long and hard. I'm surprised you didn't get paid for it. Usually that would be assigned to some department head who would take care of that. So you used your free time, and kudos to you. It's unfortunate that, at this point, some of the selectmen don't want to move forward with a decision on that. Certainly, if you accept everything that you stated as fact, it would clearly seem to indicate that plastic bags should be banned. I mean, there's no doubt about it. I mean, everything seems to point to it. The fact that the state may be banning bags themselves with some legislation seems to indicate that they have decided to move forward with it. Why the board doesn't want to take a progressive stand on this, I understand you want input, but there's information here in this feasibility study, and seem to be some, Boston has banned it, or has restricted it. It would clearly seem to indicate that there are a lot of people out there that seem to support banning the bags. If you were an environmentalist at all, presumably you might be a Democrat. I haven't run into too many Republican environmentalists. It would seem to behoove you to support this ban. So once again, if you're an environmentalist, you can't but not support this ban. It would be interesting to invite Ann Weston from the Conservation Commission on her opinion on this ban, and how she feels it would impact the environment. Ann has served the town long and hard, and her input would be invaluable. Like I said, the state ban may be coming, so why not be progressive and support it? As far as cost to the town, yes, town has a small amount of boards and employees compared to the larger towns such as Shrewsbury. And currently, the Board of Health, at least from what I read in newspaper accounts, is currently short-staffed, partially because their salaries are not equitable with other towns. So certainly would be difficult for them to take on another enforcement action. Currently, they're already enforcing trash pickup. And, but what I don't understand is, the town currently has a 20% stabilization fund, which is nearly twice that of many towns. So Auburn clearly has the money to perhaps staff the appropriate enforcement personnel. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Page?
Wayne Page, 900 Common Road. I'd like to say it's probably one of the best presentations I've seen at the Board of Selectmen's meeting, and I've been going to these for 20, 30 years. And I'd like to say you did a great job. It may be a little early. I think some of the, I can't speak for the selectmen, but the way I hear it, some of them want to find out more and get more information before it goes to town meeting. They think it's too soon. Now, I'd like to know through the chairman if this could get to the residents of the town prior to town meeting, so they can talk about this and see if they can get this on the May town meeting. If not, think about it, because I think it is a very good idea, and I think it's very, I can't say how much, you did a great job. I'm very proud of you, having you as one of our selectmen. And I hope the other board listens and keeps listening to this, because it is one fantastic idea to help our economy and our trash problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Anyone else? Name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Stuart Lucemore from the Chamber of Commerce. I live over the line in Leicester. I also would like to echo, I appreciate Mr. Low Liberty and the effort he put into his due diligence. However, on behalf of the chamber, appreciate the board's forward-thinking of trying to slow this down a little bit and ensure that if the board moves something forward, they're moving the right and appropriate measure forward. It's been mentioned there's potentially a statewide ban that could go into effect that would then supersede anything that the town would do. And I would hate to see the town waste some of its resources putting something into effect that then just gets superseded at the state level. And third, I certainly do have concerns from the business community about what a plastic bag ban would mean, what it would do to businesses. A bunch of the data in here, while wonderful, points towards no decrease in sales for businesses in neighboring communities. However, there was no correlation of the increase of costs to those businesses, of having to switch over to some sort of different product, the shelving, storage, and other ancillary costs. Madam Chair, I could go on for quite some time, but in the interest of everybody else's time, if the board is certainly going to move this towards a public hearing, I would happily hold the remainder of my comments, as well as Mr. Herbert, who's come here as well with me this evening from X-Fire Paintball in town, will happily reserve our comments to submit both written and oral testimony at a public hearing, if that's where the board is considering going at this point.
Thank you. So there's no motion on the floor yet, but certainly that seems, appears the way it's going to go with the comments that have been said. And I just want to follow up on a couple of the comments that have been made. I absolutely echo everything that's been said. Mr. Low Liberty has put yeoman's work into this. He's had, you know, we authorized it back in August, and I appreciate the work that went into it. We received this information last week, and we've had it since about last Thursday, or whatever it was, to study this. And tonight is the deadline to take a position on the town meeting warrant article in support of this. So I just don't feel that, in fairness to our policies and our procedures, the way that we have held hearings in the past, to hear from the public, that the timing is just off. It's, we have to take a position of support tonight to get it on the warrant, and I'm not ready to do that. I'm absolutely, I authorized, you know, I supported the motion to do the feasibility study, because it's something that we should be looking at. I just think that we need to slow down the process, have a public hearing. And having said that, I kind of watched the clock a little bit. Your presentation, I think, was about 35 minutes or so, and you had said you cut it back. So we're on about an hour with a small audience here. So if the board is inclined to move forward with a public hearing, I might suggest that we do it, because this is such an important issue, and I think that we will have a lot of feedback, I would suggest that we might do it on an off night, on a Monday night, that we can just dedicate to this, because we never know what we're gonna have for public hearings, license requests, anything like that. So I'll open it up to the board for comments right now.
Just through the chair, and I'm sure you have the date. When did the state say they were voting?
When's the next?
When was that?
I don't have that, because the, you know, pass committee, 13 to 1. So before it goes, that, it has to go through the House Committee. I'm not sure on the process, to be honest.
That's in Ways and Means right now.
Kind of, in Ways and Means. So it'll be sometime before they actually get a vote, either in the Senate, the full Senate, or in the House.
Are we talking the next few weeks?
I don't think it's gonna be the next few weeks.
Okay, having said that, then I'd like to make a motion definitely to move, make a date for a public hearing. And certainly, I think it's a wise thing to not have it on our next meeting date, but as soon as we probably could, in the next few weeks.
I think our next fifth meeting was March 30. I think our next fifth meeting was March 30.
April 30 is the next fifth meeting.
You could maybe have it on the first or the third.
And that's right before town.
Does it have to be on a Monday?
Well, my thought for a Monday is that generally, department heads are available for input on Monday evening where town hall is closed. I'm sure they would make the effort to be here.
So, through the chair, you're thinking that where our second, or first, third, and fifth, so you're thinking a second or fourth Monday?
Yeah, and so, we need to make a motion to have it under discussion because you were halfway through a motion.
Should I, do I have to specify a date or just make a motion?
Yeah, I think that would be best, to make a motion. And once it's seconded, we can discuss it. To make a motion to schedule a hearing for the plastic bag ban in the nearest date possible.
So, I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for Monday, March 19. Would that be the one?
Right, that would be the third, which would be an off night.
The 12th, March 12.
That's a regular scheduled meeting.
The 19th.
No, the 12th is a regular scheduled meeting. The 19th would be an off meeting.
Okay, so, Monday, the 19th for, to discuss the plastic bag ban.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry, I have to go. Sharon was just asking, did you say a time? I apologize.
At 7:00.
At 7:00.
Do we have to specify a location?
So, no, so Dan seconded it, so we're under discussion. So, we can, I'll support this motion. I would just ask that the town manager reach out to department heads, the Board of Health, and Solid Ways to be sure that people are available for that evening. I think their input will be important as well.
I think DPW Director.
DPW Director, yes. If there's nothing else, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? So, we've just scheduled a public hearing for a plastic, potential plastic bag ban on March 19, where we'll be looking for input from residents, business, any interested party. And as always, we take, we accept comments through email, and that can be found on the website. So, thank you, everyone, for waiting tonight.
We should make clear that this is not for a Maytown meeting warrant article.
No, this is not, no, this is not for a Maytown warrant article. It's to move the process forward for a plastic bag ban. Thank you, Mr. Cappenter. So, let me just find my agenda, which I've moved everything around. So, going back to the regular count, the regular agenda. We are at the draft zoning bylaw proposal for the May 1st annual town meeting, and it's a recommendation for a vote of transmitting the draft proposal for the prohibition of recreational marijuana sales to the planning board for the required public hearing in accordance with Mass. General Law 40A, Section 5, Chapter 5.
Let me make a motion, Madam Chair, that we forward this to the planning board for the required public hearing in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? In your packet tonight, we have, actually, we received one more tonight, but it was for gift acceptance in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A. We have two to the fire rescue department. The first one is for $100 from Lawrence Fitz, and the second one is from Catherine Ganache for $40 to the, excuse me, fire rescue department. Is there a motion?
Motion took up with gratitude.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? So, the next item is the policy subcommittee update on the draft code of conduct. No, Mr. Holstrom worked on this with Mr. Bertheum. I'm sorry, no, I knew that. My thoughts were getting ahead of me. So, Mr. Bertheum, I don't know how you want to move forward if you want to discuss this tonight. In Mr. Holstrom's presence, we want to hold it. We haven't had a code of conduct policy to this point. I think it's important that all members vote on it, but it's up to other members what we want to do. Go ahead.
Either way, for me, it's basically something that we were asked to put together. We were able to gather information from several different communities, and, you know, it's a pretty basic code of conduct. So, if you feel that it's best to wait for all five board members, I'm okay with that. If anybody has any questions regarding it, I can certainly try to field those questions.
Do board members have anything to let you ask Mr. La Liberty?
Through the chair, and this is just out of curiosity. What communities did you look at when you were drafting?
I don't have them in front of me. I don't have the pack in front of me, and I did this a few weeks ago. Hingham, I think, was one of them. I think Hingham was one of the biggest ones that I got things from. But there were several other, I can get back to you on that.
That's right.
There were about six or seven different communities, though, that we read through.
Thank you. Do you have something else? Mr. Cappenter?
I did, I prepared for tonight, so.
Okay, go ahead.
I read through it multiple times. I still have serious concerns and don't feel, frankly, that the board needs a code of conduct. We are governed by state law and by the Roberts Rules of Order, which I think should be more than sufficient. I did have some questions in the text. Under the introduction, the last line states, "This policy shall be reaffirmed annually." So, but there's nothing else in the body of text to say when we're going to reaffirm this annually. So, just as a kind of a thought, that that should be included. If that's going to go forward in the text, we should have something that says, "At what time are we going to reaffirm?" Because we don't reaffirm any of our policies annually. Under replicability, a last bullet. "All commission members, committee members, board members represented and reported by the board and other officials are subject to this policy." I don't know that we have the authority to impose our authority on boards that are not under our supervision. And secondly, I don't want to impose our wishes on committees without us at least sending it to them and getting a bit of feedback from them. So, that was, my question was, should this be distributed prior to adoption to the other committees that are under our jurisdiction? Most are under the jurisdiction of the town manager. So, I don't know that it would be appropriate for us to set a standard outside of our general meeting that we expect everybody to conduct themselves with civility and respect towards one another, as well as the board itself. And the standards of civility, kind of on the same line, we have, it's the last sentence. "We will likewise expect all town employees, committees, and boards under the supervision of our board to treat people with courtesy and respect and to conduct their business manner consistent with the principles of public discourse espoused in this called policy or code." Again, we haven't spoken to anybody who's under our supervision. I haven't heard a lot of complaints. I would suggest that we confine the policy to the Board of Selectmen if we're going to go forward with this, and keep this as far as standards of civility to within what is under our control, which is our own meeting. Under exercise of board authority, on the second page, last paragraph. "Once a decision of board has been made, we will abide by that decision regardless of our individual vote until and unless the decision is rescinded or set aside." I have serious concerns about this because an individual board member has every right at town meeting to be recognized by the moderator and express their views, whether the board is, whether they're in accord with the board or not. Personally, I don't find that of merit, but I don't want anything to be construed in this policy that would limit any individual member's right to express their opinion before or after a vote. "Nothing in this policy shall prevent a member from joining any organization for or against any proposal," would be what I'd ask us to include so that we understand that individual members are not subject to support the board's vote. They should, but they are not subject to it. They have every right to express their opinion. Under relations with town manager and other town employees, last paragraph, "In accordance with the town charter, members shall communicate directly with the town manager and not with department heads or employees." I was wondering if we should add, "or assistant town manager" there. On the third and final page, relations with media. "Individual members will refrain from communicating the position of the board to reporters or any media source unless the full board has previously agreed on both the position and the language of this statement." My understanding of board protocol is the chair speaks for the board once we take a vote, or if media contacts, and we as individuals should direct media to the chair if they have specific questions about policy or votes taken by the board. So, I would suggest that we have some language in there showing that the chair is, yes, is an individual member, but by protocol and practice, the chair speaks for the board once the board has taken a vote. Or, you know, I certainly don't want the chair, whether it be her or him, if there are customary remarks that are ribbon-cutting, having to submit them to the board for approval. So, I would suggest, also, as we're discussing the subcommittee tonight on the volunteers, I would suggest that we also carve out an exception for the subcommittee chair or representative because, again, I don't think we should have to go to the board and say, "By the way, the press called me about this event and wants to know who, what, where, when, why," which I think any member who is on the subcommittee should be able to provide without saying, "Well, then, may I." Relations with members of the public. It's the second sentence in the first paragraph. "We suggest that with respect to specific operational concerns, citizens initially communicate directly with the town manager with the assistant town manager." I would recommend that we strike that language. I don't think we should be telling the public who or how they should communicate with their government. But with that, that's, I appreciate all the work that you put into it. My concern is, as it has been, that this is a policy meant to control individual members' comments and conduct, and I don't support that. We're five independently elected individuals. I don't think any member up here should be telling me how to say something or when to say something with respect to how I conduct myself at a meeting. So, and as someone who has been personally attacked with both chairs that I've served under not stopping somebody, I certainly think we need to work on our own conduct rather than worry about other board members' comments.
Mr. Bertheum?
Just in response to that, I tried to write down a lot of things that you were saying, and I think they're very relevant. So, with that being said, I would appreciate if, I think that we should not take a vote on this tonight. I would like to, if Mr. Cappenter would share those notes where he thinks we should put the different language in, certainly, to put the language in to that, to this draft, and then redistribute it to everyone so that they have a chance to then maybe vote on it at the next meeting. If you can give me that, Mr. La Liberty. And to answer Mr. La Liberty's question, and thank you to the town manager because she probably had the email. The towns that we did look at were Ashburnham, Carver, Easton, Holden, Hingham, Littleton, Princeton, Redding, Sandwich, and Linfield. We probably took a little bit from at least five or six of those towns. Like I said, I think that the crux of it was Hingham. And, you know, obviously, we had to change certain language being, you know, that we have a town manager. They may have spoken to, you know, a council or where we have a Board of Selectmen. So, that type of thing had to be changed. But there was, there was a lot of good language already in those towns, so we had to kind of pick and choose what we thought was relevant, try to keep it as concise as we could, and then adapt it to our town. So, at this point here, again, I would just suggest that no motion be made and that we try to get the language that Mr. Cappenter suggested because I liked a lot of what he said, and get it in there and redo the draft, if that's okay.
I'm in agreement with that, but I would just ask you to look at relations with town manager and other employees. The last sentence, "We will establish sound, clearly defined policies so that the town manager and staff are well informed of the board's expectations." We don't have authority over the staff, so I would look to remove that. Yep, just in that last sentence.
Relations with media?
No, relations with town manager and other employees on the second page.
Oh, okay. It's the last sentence, first paragraph.
"We will establish sound, clearly defined policies so that the town manager and staff."
I'm not even in my, I think you're on page three.
Yeah.
So, if you have any relationship with town manager and other employees. So, it's the last sentence.
So, get rid of staff.
Yeah, I'm guessing that that probably came out of, you know, a charter that has a town administration form of government.
Right, okay.
So, members in agreement, just to have the subcommittee, the sound committee, the subcommittee review this further. Thank you.
Thank you for all that input.
No, and thank you for your work on that. The next item is a proclamation request. And selectman Bertheum had requested this. We have a retirement for firefighter Gary Armstrong, and we didn't meet between the request and the retirement party. So, if there is a motion to authorize the proclamation, we can sign, finish signing it tonight. Mr. Cappenter?
Point of order, according to the bylaw that we, or the policy that we adopted, this proclamation is not in order. Last September, we adopted a strict policy on who can get proclamations and who can't.
So, if you, so this isn't more so for the retirement?
Recognition of town employees and board and commission members. It specifically states who can get a proclamation. I do not see where, I have absolutely no issue with this gentleman getting a proclamation other than I think it violates the policies that we have. I, we can certainly issue him a letter of appreciation according to what the board adopted. So, one, so, on that, that specifies proclamation for town employees.
So, are we not allowed to do a proclamation for somebody that's not a town employee?
It says, "Only for town, Auburn residency, and all Auburn events. Businesses of 25, 50 years continuous. In terms of service, an individual who performs a life-saving act but other than a public safety worker, any person receiving military honors, to include the Medal of Honor and Purple Heart, an achievement at a national level individual or team, an individual, an achievement at the state level individual team, Eagle Scouts Awards and Girl Scouts Golden Awards." The preamble states that "All employees, boards, and commissions recognitions will be held one time per year during National Public Service Recognition Week, the first week in May." Subcommittee recommends following the guidelines of the National Public Service Recognition Week to recognize town employees and board and commission members to include requirements. To me, there is, we don't have anything in that policy that would say where we're recognizing him in a way that the policy doesn't allow us to. I don't take any pleasure in it. I just don't feel that the policy allows us to do it. So, I think a letter of appreciation, I believe, is signed by the chair. Certainly happy to do that. And like I said, if people want to amend the policy, make changes to the policy, I'm happy to do that, but in that, we've closed off. to do that, but in that we've closed off proclamations to every volunteer that served on a board, because we didn't want to miss somebody. We're kind of doing the same thing, we're back to where the argument started of, well, but you proposed this person, but there may be 50 others that we don't want, that we should be honoring. So to me, you know, and again, I take no pleasure in it, but that is what the board agreed to, so in that, that is the policy of the board, I feel that we should follow the policy that we adopted, you know? Otherwise, we should, we should be looking at our volunteers, and we should be giving them proclamations, because they put in so much time. I was with a town department head not too long ago, who said, "Well, it's an every-other-week, you know, it's an every-other-week commitment." But anybody who's served on a board or commission with any responsibility knows that it's not just an every-other-week, it's not just when you get your packet. I've served on many committees, and let me tell you, the amount of work that committee members put forth for this town is extraordinary, and they saved this town a tremendous amount of money, and they deserve to be recognized with a proclamation, but we said we wouldn't do it. So if we're not going to do it for them, I'm not going to do it for anybody else, because, you know, I don't think it's appropriate if we're shutting the door to volunteers, he's a volunteer, he falls under the exemption, that we're not doing that anymore, so, you know? I think it's unfortunate that this is how the policy was drafted, but.
Mr. Bertheum?
So I guess I have two choices. One would be to propose a letter of appreciation, or the other would be that, to put on an agenda to amend the policy.
Or you could do both. I mean, we can, we can work with the recognition to Gary tonight, and just do a letter of thanks, and then we can certainly, you know, I mean, and this is why policies need to be reviewed, you know, that's, these are flawed.
Absolutely, absolutely. So let's stop by, I'd like to make a motion to send a letter of recommendation, a letter of appreciation to retired firefighter Gary Armstrong for his service with the Santa Tora, past and continued service with the Auburn Fire Department, and for the town of Auburn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? And we will put that on the next agenda, the policy.
Thank you.
The next item is a May recognition event, and Mr. Carpenter had asked that I put this on the last meeting, which I missed, so we, here we are in February, looking at the annual May recognition month, but keep in mind, we just had one, what, six months ago?
September.
Yeah, so, so I'm not sure how, because we did get thrown off with our policy, I don't know how board members feel, if they want to have one again after six months, or if we want to wait till next May. I know that money was put into the budget for, for, it wouldn't take effect this May, right? It's in 2019?
Correct. Yes, we did put money in.
Budget, but whatever members prefer.
Yes, subcommittees.
It is May 6th through the 12th of 2018. I think, I certainly feel that we should be honoring them every year, and I know that we can also go to the fact that the town manager also includes volunteers in the Christmas celebration and in other celebrations, so I don't think there's any shortage of opportunities for volunteers to come in and be appreciated, but I think that we should always let them know how much we do appreciate them, as often as we can throughout the year.
I just want to look at a calendar.
Through the chair, you may want to consider a revision of the policy to make it a different time of the year, if you wanted to get it into that budget cycle.
Well, I don't think it'll make it into the budget cycle for this year anyway, so we would just.
May would not, no.
May 6th through the 12th, you said, Dan?
Yes, that is when it's, when it's supposed to be.
Okay. So the, so the Monday night, if we were to be consistent with our, with our meetings, would be May 7th, which would be an off night?
Yes, and we would want it to be on an off night, because the room is full. I am certainly happy to donate refreshments again this year, because I think it is important. Once the budget kicks in, then obviously, it'll be a weak point, but certainly things that we will need help with, and I thank the two board members to my left and right for their help, as well as Tristan for stepping in after we had a late departure. You know, we need to get our invitations, so that means getting them printed, getting them stuffed. I don't know if there's anybody on the board who has the ability to print, if you don't want staff to be asked to do that. I'm sure last year, we gathered in the basement, and we stuffed envelopes, I think, about a month or 40 days before. We do still have that email address that we can use for RSVP, I presume, but, you know, we need decorations, we need, you know, we need invitations, we need setup help if DPW isn't available to do that, so I don't know who, what, where, when would like to do that, but you certainly don't have to say it tonight, but just keep that in mind that we are going to be on an aggressive schedule, I know two of the members are running for reelection, so their time will be short as well, and occupied with running for office.
So are we at least in agreement of the May 7th date?
That's fine.
I'm just asking all board members. Yes?
Through the chair, I just wanted to point out that I would be able to print, and I'd be willing to donate that ability, however much it costs to print out the invitations.
You know, we will ask staff for postage, other than that, I think that's pretty good.
Because we do have a small, the board of selectmen do have a small budget.
Through the chair, obviously, we did last year, and are happy to do it again, give any help that you need, as well as getting the room set up.
No, thank you guys. No, it was a great event, and I think, again, we'd be looking to have the town manager speak, the chair of the board, and we would invite Mr. Frost and Mr. Moore to attend as their schedules allow. Now that we've got an early date, we better call them on the phone and let them know.
Is there anything else on this? Okay, so I just wanted to mention that timeline for the town manager evaluation, you've all received the town manager's self-evaluation, the completed evaluations are due by March 15th, and then we will schedule the public evaluation on the meeting on Monday, April 9th, in accordance with the timeline for the town manager's evaluation. Mr. Jacobson, do you have anything under town manager items that we didn't have on?
All set, thank you.
Okay, thank you. There are no tabled items. Mr. Holstrom has asked, since he's not here, to hold the WRTA senior center shuttle service that he had put on the agenda. Is there any additional public comment? Seeing none, we have no minutes. Is there anything else before the board tonight, Mr. Carpenter?
Just for the policy, anytime we do a member item, we're supposed to provide a small summary.
All right, yeah.
Can we ask Mr. Holstrom to send through Ms. Brikowski or the manager, so that we know exactly what it is he would like us to be aware of?
Okay. Anything else before the board? Is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.